We all sat?
I don't have this little card thing.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the May 6, 2025 City Council meeting to order. Please rise to the flag.
It was just a scandal.
And now we'll have a moment of silence for those who protect us home and abroad. If everybody can mute your phone, please. I'd like to welcome the school leader, he's on Sandra Perret, for being here this. We did roll call already, just so the folks know why we're, we had to wait for the IT. There was a problem with the IT. We did do roll call at 6:30, and we are now just starting the meeting now. IT just was able to get us up and running, but we will not do that. For tonight's meeting, there is no City Councilor on Zoom this evening. In compliance with the open meeting law, the city of Chicopee is broadcasting live and for future broadcasts, this meeting on Chicopee TV. Is anyone else in the audience or on Zoom audio or taping this meeting, please state your name and reasoning for doing so. Seeing none, we will move into the Mayor's Orders, Briefing, and Announcements. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Laflamme. Esteemed City Councilors, I have numerous Mayor's Orders for your consideration this evening, but I'd first like to start with a moment of silence. We've lost one of our own, Harvey LaFleur. I know many of you know him. Harvey, from my understanding, lived in Chicopee, if not all, most of his life. He did go to Chicopee schools. He was a World War II veteran. One of the honors of distinction that he earned was the Bronze Star for heroic actions during the Battle of the Bulge. Harvey was more than just a resident to me, he was a friend, and he will be missed. He has many other accomplishments in his life, receiving awards such as the Adam Marcinius Award, the Outstanding Senior Center Award, and the Charles Tracy Award, and the Paul Sampson Award. He was also a very proud participant in the Veterans Video History Project, and you'll see his picture on our tribute to the military and our veterans at the Council on Aging Senior Center at 5 West Main Street. He will be missed, and condolences to his family. Harvey LaFleur was 101 years old, and certainly a very impressive and contributor to our community, and again, condolences to his family. May he rest in peace. May we take a moment of silence in honor of Harvey LaFleur. Thank you. He now joins his beloved wife, Marjorie Up in Heaven. Mayor's Order 1 is an appropriation of $250,000 to the following-named account, Human Resources' Special Account for Unemployment Insurance, from the available funds in the Human Resource' Special Account for Workers' Comp Insurance. You can see from the background information that the monies have been all used over the year, and we need to replenish that account for unemployment. Any questions about Mayor's Order 1? Thank you for your consideration. We'll move on to Mayor's Order 2. It's the appropriation of $4,864.20 to the following-named account, Human Resources' Special Account for Indemnification of Police and Fire, from the available funds in the Undesignated Fund Cash, Free Cash Account. We are self-insured, and this is our medical bills for those who are injured on duty, and you have that background information. Any questions about Mayor's Order 2 for the indemnification of police and fire?
Any questions from the floor? Seeing none, Mayor's Order 3.
Thank you. Mayor's Order 3, order that the City Council accept the Student Awareness of Fire Education. That's the SAFE grant, in the amount of $8,500 to the Chicopee Fire Department. Said grant is accepted in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. This is the SAFE grant that we get every year, and you can see from the background information, this is the Student Awareness of Fire Education Grant. We're very familiar with the posters that often come here for the City Council to proudly display from our students, and again, promoting awareness of fire education.
Any questions from the floor? Any questions from the floors? Seeing none, we'll go on to Mayor's Order 4.
Thank you for your consideration. Mayor's Order 4, order that the City Council accept the Senior SAFE Grant in the amount of $2,900 to the Chicopee Fire Department. Said grant is accepted in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. It's also a grant, the Senior SAFE Grant, that we receive every year, and it's for $2,900, and pretty self-explanatory.
Any questions from the floor? Seeing none, we'll go to Mayor's Order 4.
Thank you for your consideration.
I'm sorry, Mayor's Order 4.
Order 5, order that the sum of $3,500 be hereby appropriated to the following-named account, Health Department's Special Account for Wildlife Control. Said amounts to be taken from the available funds in the Undesignated Fund Free Cash Account. I know that Lisa Sanders, our health director, is here, and this, you can see from the background information, is for, we've depleted the funds in that particular line item that covers rabies testing for animals here in the city of Chicopee. It's pretty self-explanatory. Any questions about...
Any questions from the floor? Seeing none, we'll move on to Mayor's Order 6.
Thank you, Lisa, for being here. Mayor's Order 6 is an appropriation of $23,140 to the following-named account, City Hall Maintenance Expense Account, gas, $11,000, sewer user fee, $9,000, water, $3,140, for a total of $23,140 from the available funds in the Undesignated Free Cash Account. You can see from the background information, I know that Dave Rice, our facilities director, is joining us, that we are in need of replenishing some of those accounts for gas and water sewer bills for the remainder of the year. Dave, anything you want to add?
No, that pretty much sums up.
Thank you. Any comments from the floor? Seeing none, we'll move into Mayor's Order 7.
Thank you. Mayor's Order 7 is the appropriation of $14,000 to the following-named account, City Hall Maintenance Expense Account for Special Services, from the available funds in the City Hall, City Hall Maintenance Salary Account for Facilities Custodian. You can see from the background information, and Dave is here too, that we need to transfer some funds from salaries, and Dave, can you give us some explanation?
Yeah, so we had a lot of unexpected major repairs this year on a few of the buildings. We had to replace some HVAC stuff at DPW, and then a couple of major repairs of some stuff at City Hall. So this account is close to being short, and we have a couple of inspections that need to happen between now and the end of the fiscal year, so this money will be able to cover that for us.
Is there any questions from the floor? Go to Roy.
Yes, Dave, if I may, now where again did you say this money is coming from?
It's coming from one of my custodian salaries for a position that hasn't been filled yet. So it's unused salary and funds.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move to Mayor's Order 8.
Order that the City Council accept the attached list of donations from various, for the various 2025 city of Chicopee events, in the amount of $7,500 from Republic Service here in Chicopee. Said donation is accepted in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. You can see the breakdown there, generosity. I want to thank Republic for contributing to our events, and really excited they gave us the full donation.
Any comments from the floor? Seeing none, we'll move on to Mayor's Order 9.
Order that the City Council accept the attached in-kind donation with a value of $75 from Bernat's Polish Meat Products on Meadow Street in Chicopee. Said donation is accepted in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A and a half. As you can see from the background information and from what I just shared with you, Bernat's Deli had generously donated a platter for our St. Joseph's flag raising of kielbasa, cheese, and crackers, and we have to recognize those donations, so we wanted to make sure that Bernat's, if you're watching, so thank you for your generosity and our celebration of St. Joseph's Day.
Any comments from the floor? Seeing none, we'll move on to Mayor's Order 10.
Order that the City Council accept the attached list of donations for various 2025 city of Chicopee events, in the amount of $2,000 from Metro Jeep, located on Memorial Drive in Chicopee. Said donations are accepted in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. I want to take a moment to thank Metro Jeep for their generosity in sponsoring our spooktacular and our Christmas tree lighting event, and again, just it's because of businesses like those, Republic and Metro Jeep and Bernat's Deli, that we're able to have these wonderful events here in the city of Chicopee, and they're always free.
Any comments from the floor? Seeing none, we'll move on to Mayor's Order 11.
Be it ordered that the Chapter 7 of the ordinances of the city of Chicopee amended be and is further, further amended as follows. Law Department Group 2, strike out paralegal A1 at $67,233.60, grade 6, and add senior litigation paralegal at $65,959.92, grade 8. Set ordinance to be operative upon passage. As you can see from the background information, this actually is a restructuring in the Law Department of the paralegals. Chantelle Paul, if she's watching, I want to wish her the best in retirement, but we've decided, as the Law Department has decided, and I concur with them, that we need to restructure our paralegal setup, and this actually is just taking the two paralegal positions and actually making them equivalent. It's not an increase in the salary line items in the budget, but this would allow us to get another paralegal for litigation, a senior litigation paralegal in the office.
Any questions from the floor? Seeing none, we'll go to Mayor's Order 12.
Mayor's Order 12. It's an order of taking acquiring a permanent utility easement in the property located near 326 Mountcom Street through eminent domain. It reads, "Whereas, the city of Chicopee through the Department of Public Works has identified a public need to acquire interest in land in the form of a permanent utility easement traversing land located at or near 326 Mountcom Street. Whereas, the public purpose of this taking is to install and maintain electrical and signal control equipment." Any questions about the eminent domain taking?
Any questions from the floor?
We'll be updating the signals at the intersection of, I believe, Britton and Mountcom.
Thank you.
Mary Beth?
Yeah, I just want to think...
Councillor Piniak Costello.
That's okay. I want to thank the Department of Public Works in regards to getting this, as the mayor said, an updated electrical and signal control. It's going to be great on the corner of Britton and Mountcom. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I also wanted to take a moment and to share with the community that the Anna Berry School Building Project will be hosting a community meeting, that everyone is invited to attend this meeting, and it's going to be located at Berry School on Thursday, May 15 of 2025 at 6:00 PM. Again, at Berry School, this is the Berry School Building Project. You're invited to this community meeting to learn about the Anna Berry School Building Project. Join us to hear details, ask questions, and share your thoughts on the project. Representatives from Kelo and Beaneck will be there as the designer, Collier's Project, our OPM will be there, and also present will be representatives of the city, the school department, and the Anna Berry School Building Commission. So hopefully, anyone who has any questions about the project can join us there. And lastly, just take a moment to recognize that it is Teacher Appreciation Week. Also, today, I believe, is Nurse Appreciation Week or Day, and I want to make sure that I mentioned that, how much we appreciate our teachers and our nurses that do so much for our school district and for our community, and also take a moment to recognize that I almost missed last night, that last Friday was, I believe, Principal Appreciation Week, and also School Lunch Hero Appreciation Week. So I wanted to recognize those... Lunch Hero Appreciation Week. So I wanted to recognize those contributors to our school district and for all their hard work and dedication, and thank you for considering the Mayor's orders, and have a great meeting.
Thank you. We will now move into public input. Public input is limited to three minutes or less. Is anyone in the audience here for public input? If so, state your name and address for the record, please. Is there anyone on the floor?
Lisa Bienvenu, 34 Everett Street. I guess I was a little surprised that we're having technical difficulties again with the state-of-the-art facility we have here. I'd like to think that they worked a little better. I, you know, I don't, I listen to the Mayor's Orders and the appropriations that come around, and then it makes me think that this is budget time, and we've yet to hear when the budget hearings are going to be. It is May. The budget needs to be approved by July. One would think that you guys have things to talk about as we listen to positions that are funded, no one gets hired for them, and then that money gets moved around to be used for other things, which is good, because there are things that need to be taken care of in the city. But we really should be thinking about how our monies are being used, especially in these difficult times during the budget process. So one would think that you guys would actually want to look at the budget information sooner rather than later. And then the first Mayor's Order, just, I thought was interesting. I understand that more money needs to be gone, go into unemployment insurance, and, but it, from the available funds in Human Resources Special Account for Workers' Comp Insurance, and then I thought, what the heck is the money that's, what is this special account for workers' comp insurance? Is this premium money that you're not using? Is this money that is a lowering of reserves on workers' comp claims? Like, what is this $250,000? I just, it just struck my mind, what is it for? I mean, if it's reserves that are going on, you know, good for the city that you're getting people back to work and claims aren't costing as much, but $250,000 is a lot of money. And I was thinking of it in context of budget, the budget. You know, every day, every week that goes by tells me that the budget hearings are just going to be, which I've listened to before, they come in, you ask a few questions, and they get pushed through. And I think in these times when money is so tight with everybody that you should be looking at the budget and how we're using our money much more closely. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public input?
Lorraine Baron, Simon Drive, Ward Four. I think the money being spent for pesticide applications on the library lawn and possibly other city properties is an unnecessary expenditure and should be used in a more constructive way instead of polluting the environment with toxic chemicals. On another subject regarding construction projects throughout the city, I would like to see more care taken to protect trees in a construction area. In front of the old library, several granite steps were placed extremely close to two trees, as well as fencing and other miscellaneous materials, which could damage the tree trunk and root systems from soil compaction. Tree protection needs to be included when preparing a construction project contract and then monitored for compliance. I think it is very important to make an effort to preserve the shade trees, which we currently have, since it takes years to produce a full-grown shade tree. In this era of climate change, the trees, the trees, excuse me, the loss of our trees is a significant loss, especially for pedestrians who appreciate relief from our increasingly hot weather. I would encourage all city residents and councilors to advocate for the protection of all our city trees and for replacement planting, and also to apply for any grants that may be available for tree planting. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Good evening. I got to make sure I stare, in case anybody's hard of hearing. My name's Julie LaRue. I'm at 58 Carus Street, Chicopee, Massachusetts, Ward Five. Dear councilors, I have three concerns that I would like to express. The first one is several weeks and months ago. Did you have, okay. We were informed that we were going to have an increase in the water bill, and members of the public, as well as the council, said that it would probably be very confidentially good for the constituents to hear why, what is the actual reason for it. And I've had several people in my community ask, we've got this increase, why are we having it so much? Where's the transparency? I thought you guys were going to have somebody come in and talk to the public about this. It's very important that the community knows the needs of the water company and to be able to make informative decisions on how they're looking at their bills. Secondly, we have a library renovation of the old school library. My understanding, it was supposed to be completed by April. I believe April's gone. And the problem I see in this is that every type of renovation that has occurred in the city of Chicopee, when it gets delayed, what does that mean? There's a request for more money. Are we going to see that happen again with this library? Third, where is the budget? I have to agree with the previous public speaker. We need to have it early enough so that your constituents are able to look at the budget and maybe get back to you on what their concerns are. So I would really like to see it earlier so that the people of the community can make an informed decision and express it to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the floor for public input?
Thank you. Mary Beth Costello, 66 Voss Avenue. I met with Sharon Riley, the auditor, recently, and to repeat what Sharon Riley has said in the past, as well as the mayor, there have been questions within the community that I live in whether or not there are audits. But in fact, every year, there is an annual audit, and that audit is done with the city and with a private individual name, I believe, Thomas Scanlon. This year, Sharon Riley continues to make changes positively because, for the public's information, that annual audit for FY '22, '23, and '24 will now be online. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here for public input?
Sue Nimchik, James Street, 362. To fact or not to fact, to speak or not to speak, to represent or not to represent, there is no question. And what was lovely about the public insight, it's not input, it's insight, for the benefit of the watching eyes and the listening ears, as well as the council, there were good questions raised, especially about the budget. It's timely. And Lisa and the others, you're right. It is, people are going through really hard times. I'm in the profession, and I do my very, very best to make sure that their 30, 40, 50, 60 years is impeccable, and it's easier. The same level of endurance and insight and foresight should be that of every single elected individual, okay? The budget, of course, it should be paramount. Sue, or Susan, you inspired me when you came out with the figures over 10 years, $2 million of, you know, debt with the golf course, okay? No one wants that ever to happen again, and we need to be before the curve of facts and everything, on every single aspect, because people are going through hard, hard times, and they don't know what the future will bring, a lot of chaos and everything like this. And if elected officials can give the public insight and relief, and knowing you're busting your butts to do the very, very best for every single, what, life-invested individual out there, you'd have accolades of applause time and time again. Just as questions are raised, what's really paramount, equal to, whose vote do you really vote with? That is the public, every single voter. What's important about every single question is the answers that must be brought up so that you can have better policies, procedures, directions, process. It's that simple. And you know what? People at home would be applauding because they want to see some answers in that in a better Chicopee. So yes, keep coming with questions and everything because they are vital. Because I do a little bit of radio every once in a while, and I came up with this. It's an original, okay? We sit on our bums, we eat our buns, we think and say butts, and we're left behind. No one in Chicopee, especially the voter, ever wants to be left behind. Questions, answers, the vote is really paramount and should never be pushed down or the average person forgotten, ignored, or not counted. And I've seen people's faces, they're ticked. Three, two, one. I thought I'd count down for you, Frank.
Thank you. I gave you your full amount. That's, that's the reason why I leave a couple seconds on, because you have to shut it and turn it back on. Is there anyone here for public input on Zoom? Is there anyone here for public input on Zoom?
Motion to close public input.
Motion made a second to close public input. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And the motion passes. Okay, communications?
None.
No communications. Minutes, please.
Two sets, April 1st, April 15th.
Contra Shumsky.
Motion that the minutes of the April 1st, 2025 city council meeting and the April 15th, 2025 city council meeting be approved this evening.
Motion made a second that the April 1st, 2025 regular meeting and the April 15th, 2025 regular meeting be approved this evening. On the motion, please.
Self-explanatory.
Thank you. Any comments from the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And the motion passes. We'll now move into the Mayor's Orders.
Order that the sum of $250,000 be hereby appropriate to the following named account, Human Resource Special Account for Unemployment Insurance. Said amount is to be taken from the available funds in the Human Resource Special Account for Workers' Comp Insurance.
Contra Brooks.
Make a motion that the Mayor's Order be received and passed through all stages on the recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made a second. The motion be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
On the motion, this is a departmental transfer from one line item to the next. This will cover unemployment insurance costs that the HR department is incurring.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crapitz?
Yes.
Shumsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Piniak Costello?
Yes.
Eleven, yes?
And a motion passes.
Order that the sum of $4,864.20 be hereby appropriate to the following named account, Human Resource Special Account for Demnifications of Police and Fire. Said amount is to be taken from the available funds in the undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash Account.
Contra Goff.
Motion that the Mayor's Order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made a second. The order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
We all know that the city is self-insured, and this covered the medical bills for the police and fire and.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Contra Ballakir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, it's nice to see this number down. Usually, it's much higher than this, so kudos to guys and women out there that are not getting banged up and we don't have to pay higher premiums. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crapitz?
Yes.
Shumsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Piniak Costello?
Yes.
And a motion passes.
Order that the city council accept a student awareness of fire education grant in the amount of $8,500 to the Chicopee Fire Department. Said grant is accepted in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Contra Kushein.
Motion that the Mayor's Order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made a second. The motion be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
This is a continuing grant that we get every year, and it's used for the schools' fire education awareness.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crapitz?
Yes.
Shumsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Piniak Costello?
Yes.
Eleven, yes?
And a motion passes.
Order that the sum of $3,500 be hereby appropriate to the following named account, Health Department Special Account for Wildlife Control. Said amount is to be taken from the available funds in the undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash Account.
Contra Shumsky.
Motion that the Mayor's Order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made a second. The motion be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
This is a senior safe grant in the amount of $2,900 to the Chicopee Fire Department.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crapitz?
Yes.
Shumsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Piniak Costello?
Yes.
Eleven, yes?
And a motion passes.
No. Order that the sum of $23,140 be hereby appropriate to the following named City Hall Maintenance Expense Accounts, gas, $11,000, sewer user fee, $9,000.
Point of order, this is the wrong order, clerk.
Missed one. Missed one.
Yep.
You missed one.
You got it.
Did Health Department?
No. And then we have.
Health Department was Wildlife Control?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Five, clerk.
Wildlife is five.
Yeah. Didn't we do?
Missed four.
No. We missed four.
Yes.
Missed four.
All right.
Okay, four.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. That's why they make pencils with erasers.
Okay. Order that the city council accept a senior safe grant in the amount of $2,900 to the Chicopee Fire Department. Said grant is accepted in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Contra Ballakir.
Motion that the Mayor's Order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made a second. The motion be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
On a motion, Mr. President, this is an award that we get every year, and this is a senior safe grant in the amount of $2,900, and this helps seniors with issues in terms of education regarding fire safety.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, hold on a minute.
I think we've done.
Or twice.
Twice. Correct.
On number five. Georgia's number five.
The wildlife one?
Yes. No. We did the wildlife one.
Nope.
And then you. Yeah, so five is done. We're on four.
Well, the comments were made about four.
I made the comments.
Based on the sequence of the Mayor's Orders, so we technically didn't talk about five.
You didn't read number five.
If I'm understanding correctly.
We want to talk about five, we'll have to have a motion to reconsider it because we, I read it, it was voted upon, even though the comments were about a different order.
Correct.
So if we want to comment on five, we'll need a motion to reconsider it.
Does, if someone might make a motion to reconsider, we'll go back to that.
I'll make a motion to reconsider. Just so we can put it on the floor.
To reconsider item number five for comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes for five.
Okay, five's on the floor. Can I read it again?
No.
Does anybody want to comment?
Should we read the order and vote on it again? Because I'm pretty sure you read the safe and then you read the senior one.
Which one would you like me to read? I'll read whatever you'd like.
I'm just wondering, just for, you know, people are going to start making all the claims and stuff against us.
Okay, I'll read five again. Order that the sum of $3,500 be hereby appropriate to the following named account, Health Department Special Account for Wildlife Control. Said amount is to be taken from the available funds in the undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash Account.
Department Wildlife Control, and this covers rabies testing for $900, an additional $2,600 in its anticipation of services now through the end of the fiscal year, which typically they see an increase in skunk and raccoon activity as the weather warms up. Thank you.
Any other comments from the floor? Seeing none, roll call.
Okay, on five. President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Eleven, yes.
Now, we got to vote on number four. Just vote on it, because we spoke about it. That's correct?
Yep.
We're voting on Mayor's Order four. It was already discussed, but it wasn't voted on.
Want me to read it again?
Yep.
I'll read it again. Order that the city council accept the senior safe grant amount, grant in the amount of $2,900 to the Chicagabe Fire Department. Said grant is accepted in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Counsel Schumsky.
Motion that the order be received and pass this evening.
Motion made a second.
That the mayor's order be received and pass through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Sorry. Motion made a second, the order be received and pass through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion.
This is a senior safe grant for $2,900.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Eleven, yes.
Just so people know, the clip was stuck on between the two of them, so that's why it went out of order. We're just going to redo them all, both. Thank you.
Order that the sum of $23,140 be hereby appropriate to the following named City Hall Maintenance Accounts, gas, sewer, and water. Said amounts be taken from the available funds in the Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash Account, $23,140.
Counsel Labree.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and pass through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made a second, the motion be received and pass through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
On a motion, with the gas and water and sewer going up, the facilities directors indicated that we're going to be short this amount of money, and this will get us through the remainder of fiscal 2025, which is this July 1st.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Eleven, yes.
And a motion passes.
Order that the sum of $14,000 be hereby appropriate to the following named account, City Hall Maintenance Account for Special Services. Said amounts be taken from the available funds in the City Hall Maintenance Salary Account for Facilities Custodian.
Counsel Roy.
The motion that the mayor's order be received and pass through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made a second, the motion be received and pass through all stages on the recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
On the motion, this is a request to transfer funds between the following GL accounts. The funds are needed to cover expenses for the remainder of the fiscal year 25, and it transfers from the following named CHM Salary Account. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Eleven, yes.
And a motion passes.
Order that the city council accept the attached list of donations for the various 2025 City of Chicagabe events in the amount of $7,500 from Republic Service, 845 Burnett Road, Chicagabe. Said donations are accepted in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Counsel Crapitz.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and pass through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor, and the donations accepted tonight.
Motion made a second, the motion be received and pass through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor, and the donation accepted this evening. On the motion, please.
Yeah, these were donations for various events, and I'll just quickly read them. The Chicagabe fireworks at Zott Park, National Night Out, Spooktacular Bright Nights for the seniors, Christmas tree lighting, and flag-raising ceremonies.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Eleven, yes.
And a motion passes.
Order that the city council accept the attached in-kind donation with a value of $75,000 from the Burnett's Polish Meat Products, 895 Menno Street. Said donation is accepted in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, and one half.
Counsel Costello.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and pass through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor, and a thank you letter be sent to Burnett's Polish Meat Products.
Motion made a second, that motion be received and pass through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor, and this donation accepted this evening. On the motion.
Yes, Burnett's Polish Meat Products has made an in-kind donation to the city for the value of $75, and again, I'm requesting that a letter be sent from the council. This is a generous donation. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll do it for the mayor's order eight, too. Any other comments from the floor? Roll call, please.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Eleven, yes.
And a motion passes.
Order that the city council accept the attached list of donations from various 2025 City, for various City of Chicagabe events in the amount of $2,000 from Metro Jeep, 650C Memorial Drive. Said donations are accepted in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Counsel Ariaga.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and pass through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made a second, the motion be received and pass through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
This is a wonderful donation from Metro Jeep, to go towards the Spooktacular and our Christmas tree lighting. I would also ask that we send a thank you letter to them.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Eleven, yes.
And a motion passes.
Be it ordained that Chapter 7 of the Ordinances for the City of Chicagabe is amended, be hereby further amended as follows. Law Department, Group 2, strike out paralegal, add senior litigation paralegal. Said ordinance to be operative upon passage.
Counsel Brooks.
Make a motion that the mayor's order 11 be received and referred to the Ordinance Committee for a first reading and a public hearing.
Motion that the order be received, take its first reading, and refer to the Ordinance Committee for a public hearing. On the motion, please.
On the motion, this is simply just a reorganization based on a retirement within the Law Department, creating two paralegal positions that will, one will focus on litigation, and one will be a generalist paralegal.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Eleven, yes.
And a motion passes.
Order that the city council accept the attached in-kind donation with a value of $75,000 from the Burnett's Polish Meat Products, 895 Menno Street. Said donation is accepted in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, and one half.
Counsel Costello.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and pass through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor, and a thank you letter be sent to Burnett's Polish Meat Products. Motion. Motion made a second, that motion be received and pass through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor, and a thank you letter be sent to Burnett's Polish Meat Products. Motion. Motion made a second, that motion be received and pass through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor, and a thank you letter be sent to Burnett's Polish Meat Products. Yes, Burnett's Polish Meat Products has made an in-kind donation to the city for the value of $75, and again, I'm requesting that a letter be sent from the council. This is a generous donation. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll do it for the mayor's order eight, too. Any other comments from the floor? Roll call, please.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Works, the superintendent Liz Batista, as well as Quinn Lonzac, that have been working on a project in this area. And that they had the foresight to make sure that while they were working on this particular project, this is a big deal because it's to install and maintain electrical and signal control equipment, which will improve road safety on that particular corner of Britton Street and Mount Carm. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none? Roll call.
President Laflambeau, Roy, Ariaga, Brooks, Goff, Valkir, Crapitz, Dumsky, Kuchain, Labree, yes, Phineas Costello, eleven yes.
And a motion passes.
We have a favorable report from the Utilities Committee for petition for a joint or identical pole locations for Verizon of New England requesting permission to locate poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary anchors.
Counselor Goff.
Plainfield Street.
Counselor Goff.
Motion that the committee report, the Utilities Committee report be received and approved this evening.
Motion may second the favorable Utilities Committee report be received and approved this evening. On the motion, please.
This is a petition to install an identical pole by Verizon to help secure and locate wires, cables, and fixtures.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? All in, uh, roll call now. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, and the motion passes.
Okay. We have a favorable report from the Rules Committee. Be it ordered, the Rules Committee meet to discuss the following open meeting law complaints. One filed by Derek Dobaz, two filed by Patrick Higgins.
Counsel LeBrie.
Yes, I'd like to make a separate motion on each of these. Do I need a motion for that?
No, just.
Because they're two different things.
Yeah.
Just do item.
Two separate. Okay, motion for item one, so fourteen, number one. Motion to approve the response letter and allow the Law Department to send the letter.
Motion made in second, we approve the appropriate, the approval of rule number fourteen, number one, motion to send to, to approval and sent to full board for the vote and allow the Law Department to send out a letter. On the motion.
On the motion, self-explanatory.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, and the motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion on number fourteen, number two. Motion to postpone to the call of the chair to allow the Law Department to request an extension to get more information.
Motion made, motion made in second, at number fourteen, number two. Motion to postpone to the call of the chair to allow the Law Department to request an extension to get more information. On the motion, please.
On the motion, self-explanatory.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, and the motion has it.
We have a favorable report from the Ordinance Committee. Be it ordained by the City Council, the Code of the City of Chigbee for the year 1991 as amended, be hereby further amended as follows. Delete in its entirety Chapter 188-17 licenses for hawkers and peddlers and transient vendors, and delete in its entirety Chapter 188-17.1 Solicitation of charitable organization in certain place thereof, Chapter 188-17, the licenses for transient vendors, hawkers, peddlers, door-to-door sales, flea markets, and charitable events.
Counsel Crapitz.
Motion that the favorable amended ordinance could be report, be received, take its second and final reading, and be enrolled and ordained tonight.
Motion that the Ordinance Committee report, take its second and final reading, and be enrolled and ordained. On the motion, please.
Uh, yeah, this really deals with Section D, subsection two, that had to do with background checks for door-to-door sales. The rest of the proposed ordinance did not change out of the Ordinance Committee, so just wanted to make you aware of that. Thank you.
Counsel Brooks.
Yeah, I had some concerns about how we tracked these vendors and they were, while they were registered, and that's a pretty liberal description of what was happening with the police department, there weren't any background checks done. And I took a page from my line of work where we typically query anybody 15 years or older who are going to interface with the public, and some of the most vulnerable populations, particularly are seniors. So by putting the query requirement, I think we've strengthened this to really help protect the residents of the city. And not only does it delineate the hours in which people can be approached, it ensures people know that, that folks who are knocking on their doors are properly credentialed and have been background checked through the Mass Day Query System, which I think is essential to the overall success of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Counsel Goff.
I'd just like to thank everybody for their hard work on, on getting this through. You know, Counselor Brooks and, and Counselor, I can't even, Frank.
Laflambeau is my last name.
President Laflambeau.
Thank you.
Of course, our Law Department, it, it took a while and the wording had to be played with a lot, and I'm glad that we finally have an ordinance for door-to-door sales. And like Counselor Brooks says, it protects our most vulnerable population.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counsel Goff. I mean, Counselor Costello.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Brooks, for bringing up the query checks. Would this apply also to, we're talking about door-to-door sales, but would the query checks also do, say like FedEx or Amazon?
No.
Where they come to the door, even though they don't stay, they're there at the door? I don't know if that's encompassed in this particular ordinance.
This is hawkers and peddlers simply. I mean, they're, they're a delivery service in which people request that they come to their home versus being, you know, without requests solicited in their home. So it's no different than the U.S. Postal Service. We, we'd probably be safe to assume that Amazon, UPS, and the Postal Service runs robust background checks before they let people interface with the general public. This is just for hawkers and peddlers. Somebody who's selling windows, or siding, or roofing, or asking for donations for some charitable cause, this is not traditional, I guess, what is now traditional retail delivery of products to one's home.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Brooks.
Thank you. Counsel.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll say.
Yeah, I just, I just have one more comment. I get a lot of concerns in regards to these deliveries, especially with porch pirates and things like that, but I, I see where you went with this, and I, and I do appreciate that. I don't know if we can even go down the road of the regulation for the modern delivery systems that we now have and seem to be growing. Thank you.
Counsel Ariaga.
Um, I just want to thank off and Laflambeau for bringing this forward and the work on ordinance, because I have had some questionable things at my house too, over the years of sales that were a little scary, opening the door. So I, I just really want to thank you for this, having experienced some stuff myself. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to talk on this for a second.
And to allow the president to speak.
Motion made in second, allow the president to speak. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have seen. I just want to take a minute to thank, again, Sue and I, we were working on this with our attorney. We've had many, many meetings here in City Hall with our attorney, Tim Riley. So I want to thank Tim for doing a back and forth with us several times and helping us with this particular one, because it was very important we do it right. And I think it finally came out the way we should have it, as Counsel Brooks mentioned. So thank you, Counsel, for taking care of it. Any other questions, comments on this one? Okay, so this is, we have to do a roll call.
Yes. Yep. President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Dumsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Phineas Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes.
We have a favorable report with a motion to postpone from the zoning committee for special permit application under Chapter 275-52B13 for the purpose of a kennel license located at 17 Jeanette Drive.
Counsel Valakir.
Motion that the favorable zoning report be received and a special permit be postponed to the next zoning meeting on May 28th, 2025 at 6:30 City Hall Auditorium.
Motion made in second, the favorable committee report be special, report special permit be received and postponed to the May 28th at six o'clock?
Six thirty.
At six thirty in the second, the third floor auditorium of the City of Chigbee. On the motion, please.
On the motion, Mr. President, yeah, this is an interesting one. This is a proposal for a kennel license of six service dogs and two pet dogs for a total of eight dogs in a residential area. And one of the questions here evolved around service dogs. Are they a protected class? Do they have a different standing? So we had, we had an interesting meeting here last week. We probably had, oh, in the vicinity of at least one side, I think it was 32 people. The other side, we probably had another 15 or 20. So we had close to 50 people on this one. And we also had Health Department representatives. We had Thomas J. O'Connor. We had a number of neighbors back and forth. And the sentiment was that we probably needed a little more information to make credible decision. So therefore, the committee members opted to go with the postponement until we get a little more information so that we have a better understanding of the issue because service dogs, I think, a lot of people have certain thoughts, sentiments about them. And again, as we're not experts in the field of service dogs, this is the prudent way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, and the motion passes.
Okay, we have a favorable report with a motion to postpone from the zoning committee. It ordered that the Church of God, 993 Chigbee Street be called before the City of Chigbee Zoning Committee to discuss the special permit held by the Church of God.
Counsel Valakir.
Motion that the favorable zoning committee report be received and a motion to postpone to the August 27th, 2025 zoning meeting at 6:30 at City Hall Auditorium.
Can you repeat that? August 25th?
August 27th.
Twenty seventh.
Yes.
Okay, motion made in second, that the favorable zoning committee report be received and postponed to the August 27th meeting? Okay, on the, on the motion, please.
Yeah, on the motion, Mr. President, yeah, this, this was kind of an interesting one, too. We had a situation whereby we had some signage, electronic signage, but there was a complaint, and there was also a concern by a counselor of that ward that the sign was, how shall I say, not working properly in compliance. So in other words, some of the signage was not following any second pause or delay, which is in our ordinance that it should. Also, that I believe there was some bright flashing, and there was some scrolling, too, so there wasn't the pause. So we, as, as with the special permit, we have the right to call, call people in. And so we had the pastor, we had some members of the congregation from the Church of God. And we had an interesting dialogue with them. Basically, they were having trouble with the sign, as I referenced a minute or two ago, and they were trying to figure out how to, how to remedy the situation. And the people were kind of saying, look, we're not IT people. We need some help. And so we were going back and forth in the discussion with them. And actually, one of our fellow counselors, Counselor Tim Wagner, he said, look, I have expertise in IT. I can take a look at the machine that's putting this information out there with this electronic signage. And he felt that he could help them, and they in turn accepted his help. Again, rather than to have to go out and pay an expert and pay a large amount of money to try to rectify the situation. So the remedy was proposed to take a look at a couple of months, and that Counsel Wagner would work with this group and try to rectify the problem. So that seemed to be the consensus. And so we agreed to that at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, and the motion passes.
We have a favorable report with a motion to postpone from the zoning committee for special permit application under Chapter 275-67 for the purpose of approval under mill conversion and commercial center overlay ordinance for approval of residential development to include 600 new residential apartments at the former Cabotville Mill Building on 165 Front Street.
Counsel Valakir.
Motion that the favorable zoning committee report be received and a special permit application be postponed until the May 28th, 2025 zoning committee meeting at City Hall Auditorium at 6:30 PM.
Motion made in second, the favorable zoning committee report, special permit application may be postponed to the 28th, May 28th, 2025 zoning subcommittee meeting in the City Hall Auditorium at 6:30. On the motion, please.
On the motion, yeah, this is another interesting one, Mr. President. We, we spent considerable amount of time with this particular issue. As we're, as we're well aware, Cabotville has been kicking around for a while, and we have a potential of a, of a new applicant, Bridgewater Capital Partners, under Mark Younger. So we had a presentation that evening from John Furman. John, he's an engineer, and he was talking about some of the particulars regarding this particular project. In particular, he was talking about the waivers, and he gave us a PowerPoint presentation regarding landscape requirements, parking, and noise level. So we went back and forth with him. We had a few questions regarding his proposal. And then we said, well, this, this sounds interesting, but we got a couple of issues here. And the two issues basically overdue taxes, and the other one was the overlay district report, committee report, which was incomplete. So we had two big roadblocks ahead of us. And basically, we'll address these as follows. The, the tax issue, this has been kicked around for a while. On this property, there's outstanding indebtedness in 2024 taxes. There's also outstanding indebtedness on 2025 taxes. And they're quite a bit of money. So we were going back and forth with, with the proposal, with the new applicant, and also the engineer who proposed what, what they were looking for. So we were kind of at a crossroads, and we, we took a little break. We took a little break, and so the applicant made a phone call to the current owner. And the current owner, in principle, said that he would reach out to the city, and he would reach out to the collector's office to try to rectify tax issues. So therefore, we, we said, all right, it looks like we have a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel. And we said, okay, we're going to postpone this until May 28th, with the hopes that we have some reconciliation regarding the taxes, because the 2024 taxes are overdue, and I've had several conversations with the collector on this, and he will be going into tax-taking in July if these are not rectified, which opens another new Pandora's Box. Now, today, when I was preparing my remarks for tonight's meeting, I had an interesting phone call at approximately 4:15 this afternoon from the city collector, and he said that he had two phone calls from the, Mr. Furman, the engineer, inquiring about taxes. So the hope is that between now and the 28th, that we're going to be able to reconcile a less the arriage of taxes that are due to the city. And then if we go down that path, hopefully, we can potentially issue a special permit if everybody's in compliance with also the issues that Planning Department and the overlay district report, if they answer those questions and are agreement. So hopefully, there is some light at the end of the tunnel. But again, the prudent thing was to postpone this, Mr. President, until May 28th, and the hope is that we'll be on board with taxes, and we'll be able to work with our city officials and get some type of agreement and move this thing forward. Thank you.
Counsel Brooks.
Yeah, and I think in addition to the taxes, let's not lose sight of the fact, and this project would be in my ward, so I certainly want to see it come to fruition. But there are several liens that the city have placed on this project.
Correct.
Or parcel, rather, because of the security detail that we are forced to provide because a former delinquent owner no longer provided that level of security because we were concerned about public safety, potential for fire. There's a lack of a fire suppression system in that building that's adequate for the size of the building.
Right.
So once that PNS goes through, we have the, we should be the first ones at the table to say reimburse us for whatever the cost is, because you hear about the obsessive, the, the excessive cost of $40,000 per month for the security detail that we're required to provide. So that's, that's a second hurdle. If the taxes are, that's easy, because, you know, the assessor can clearly give you what is owed.
Correct.
But to execute the PNS and get it through, the city has a lien on that property. That could take a substantial amount of time, much more than simply writing a check to Collector Iwanicki's office to make the city whole via property taxes. There, there are other elements at play where there are things that are in arrears. And I just, you know, I just point that out only because we've, we've talked about it, and we've made allocations via mayor's orders for the past year and a half, almost two years. So.
Counsel Valakir.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Dovetailing Counselor Brooks' remarks, yes, we're, that's something, too, that has to be factored into this analysis. So this is, this is an interesting quagmire. And we're, we're hopeful that there will be some light at the end of the tunnel by the 28th. Otherwise, it's going to be a difficult point again that we're going to be, and hopefully we're not at an impasse. But thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counsel Costello.
Just have a question through the chair to Counselor Brooks. Your concern is extremely valid, because we've been talking about the security of this building forever, and I appreciate you bringing it up tonight. But I can't, I can't remember if we had any type of court action in this. Maybe President Laflambeau or Counselor Brooks can update the public on where we are with this very expensive security that we are, that we are supplying.
My understanding is we've placed liens on the property in aggregate every time we reach a certain point, so whether it's every six months or a year, for our costs incurred, so that when the purchase and sale is fully executed, the city will be made whole for all expenses incurred. I don't know, maybe Attorney Riley could speak more so to, you know, the court appearances, but my understanding is there's liens been placed on the building, and that prior to any full execution of the purchase and sale, the city will be made whole for all expenses incurred.
Thank you.
Okay. I just want to caution, let's not be talking about litigation and that on the floor when we don't have the exact answers.
Right.
Would you like to speak on it? Yes, you're, you're one of the attorneys that were sat in it.
So there's a housing court case from a few years ago against the current owner, who is Fort Perkins LLC. In addition, the city, so then there's the back taxes owed. So the taxes are considered a lien, and that could be, at some point, be made into what, there could be a tax-taking if it gets to a certain amount. You'd have to ask the collector what that amount would be. But recently, the city also filed a lawsuit. First, we filed a mechanic's lien, which is just recording something at the registry saying that we're owed money, the city's owed money. And then to enforce that, we filed a lawsuit, I believe in Superior Court, to enforce it. And the amount, I believe, is 125,000. And as Counsel Brooks had said, that keeps increasing per month. I don't have the exact numbers. So there's taxes owed on the building. There's also a lawsuit to protect the city for their mechanic's lien for the cost of security.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counsel Dumsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to kind of piggyback and elaborate on my colleague, Counsel Valakir's comments about the postponement and all that. One of the big factors that went into our decision was a ordinance that we have had prior precedent with, I think it was last year, with developer, or not developer, a applicant over on Chigbee Street. The ordinance prohibits us from granting any special permits if there are taxes owed on any property. The common consensus, I believe, and I'm not going to speak to, for everybody, but I would hypo, guess, I can't speak tonight, I feel like Joe Biden, I would say that we all want to see this get developed. And I'm, I'm very excited for the potential, and I'm looking forward to hopefully having this project on, I'd say, come to fruition in the next coming months. So fingers crossed. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Do we need a roll call? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, and the motion passes.
We have a favorable report from the zoning committee for a special permit application under Chapter 275-62B25 for the purpose of constructing a self-storage facility with associated office space in an industrial district located Schwinnigan Drive, Patriot Holdings.
Counsel Valakir.
Motion that the, that the favorable zoning report be received and the special permit be granted this evening with conditions.
Motion made in second, the favorable zoning committee report be received, special permit application be received and approved this evening with restrictions. On the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this again was an interesting one in that we've had this, we've had this kicking around a little bit before. So there were, I think, two issues that came forth. There was, the site plan was modified, and because the special permit was also not acted on within a certain period of time, it kind of elapsed. So therefore, the applicant reapplied for the special permit, and they presented, and again, the recommendation is that special permit be granted with the following conditions. This is a permit to run with the land. The, also subject to the approval of the SBRAC review, no fuel allowed in units, subject to city inspection if problems arise regarding repair of vehicles, as this is a self-storage facility, and the fire department inspection before the special permit is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz. Dumsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Phineas Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes.
Be it ordered that the Chigbee City Council send a, send a letter to Congressman Neal supporting federal funding for libraries.
Counsel Costello.
Motion that the order be received and discussed at tonight's meeting.
Motion made in second, that the order be received and discussed this evening. On the motion.
The, it, it's ironic. Right before I left home today, I, I was on the internet, and the last thing I saw was that there's concern with libraries across the state about not being funded adequately. And it showed that programs could be cut. And it showed that programs could be cut. This is serious. This is a big, big deal. We have an excellent library system in the city of Chickaby. We have a nice library in the downtown district that provides services for a lot of people from all generations. In my ward, we have a, a branch library that's very active and is used by many members of our community. I just couldn't believe that this particular item was on the internet before I left here. But again, it's serious if money is going to be cut. We have an excellent staff. We have a mobile book program that does a lot of services for a lot of people. I'm, I'm asking that we send a letter to Congressman Neal supporting that federal funding for libraries continue, so that libraries remain a major community service in our community. Again, we have a great librarian director, her entire staff is wonderful. We must continue these programs. Ironically, a person that gave it a like was Jessica Avery, noting that this is something that we should support. Part of that post said that people should be contacting their federal congressmen and United States senators. So I'm asking that we have a discussion if the board here will take the stand to continue federal funding for libraries, continue the excellent programs that our library gives Thank you.
Okay, so Counsel Costello, you want to have it approved this evening?
Yes.
Okay. Do we know, if you want a discussion, we're going to send it to a committee. So you want, your motion is to have it approved tonight to send?
Right. And if, if I may, if somebody else wants to...
It's not going, it's got to go to a committee.
Okay, no problem.
We're not going to have an open, some, that should go to communication, you want a discussion.
Okay.
So let's take a vote. Any other comments? So the vote on the floor is just to send a letter to Congressman Neal.
Well, I think the motion was that the item be discussed. That was her motion.
Right.
So we need, we would need, if you're going to put this in a committee, you're going to make a motion to put it in a committee. Or if you want this voted on tonight, make a motion that the letter be sent. So either one of those.
I, I would ask for...
So far, the motion was just to discuss it.
Right. We discussed it tonight. I would ask for guidance legally.
Just if you want to make a motion to send the letter to them tonight to be approved.
To the congressman or to the committee?
No, to the congressman. She can do that.
It's like sending a letter to say thank you.
Right. Right. So she can just make...
Send a letter.
Right. Right. So you can just make a motion to send the letter.
Thank you.
Tonight, if you want to make that motion.
Okay, so I'll amend the motion just to send a letter to Congressman Neal supporting federal funding for libraries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion, any questions on it? Roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion passes.
Okay. Thank you.
Be it ordered that the Rules Committee meet to discuss the following open meeting law complaints. One filed by Derek Doboz for 162025. Two filed by Derek Doboz for 162025. Minutes.
Counsel Brooks, I'm sorry, Counsel Labrie.
Motion receive the order and send the items one, number one and two to the Rules Committee for a public hearing.
Motion made to second that the order be sent to the Rules Committee for a public hearing on item number one and two. On the motion.
Self-explanatory.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Be it ordered that the zoning committee meet to discuss noncompliance of ordinance operating before 7:00 a.m. with heavy-duty equipment. Noise appears to be over 70 decibels, dust and dirt from excavating on the house, windows, deck, and in the pool. Address Ludlow Road, Marion Excavating Property in Chickaby and South Hadley. Invite Building Department, Board of Health. Mailing address 749 New Ludlow Road, South Hadley.
Counsel Costello. Excuse me.
Motion that the order be received and sent to the zoning committee for a public hearing.
Motion made to second that the order be received and sent to the zoning committee for a public hearing. On the motion, please.
Yeah, on the motion, this is self-explanatory. There's been some issues in regards to noncompliance with the neighbors at this particular address, which is 130 Ludlow Road. Thank you. And I did ask, I just want to finish. I did ask the city attorney for his advice on this because of the noncompliance, and he said that it should, at some point, go to zoning. So I appreciate his, his expertise in making sure that these issues get addressed. Thank you.
Counsel Schumsky.
Through the chair to our attorney, I'm just, I'm a little confused as to why this is going to zoning and not ordinance, this particular order.
Mr. President, should I answer that?
Yes.
Okay. So I think what I suggest is that it be sent to, that first you ask the Building Department and the Health Department to go cite the violator before you come to zoning, because you need some backup, you need investigation. So that's the first thing. Number two, I don't know off the top of my head if there is a special permit that's, that the zoning committee could call them in on. So I don't know that they had to come before the, I don't remember them coming before the zoning committee for a special permit.
There was no special permit granted.
I don't think they were. I think they went to the planning board and got an approval in conservation, but I don't believe that zoning would have anything to talk about, is my, I guess my point.
Counsel Balaic here.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, these are a couple of questions. I, I think our attorney helped some of, with some of the questions I was just going to pose in that we probably need to get building, especially go out and Board of Health, and they probably need to go out and do some type of investigations and file some type of reports. And again, referencing what our attorney just referenced, I, I don't know if there's, and I don't think there's a special permit involved here. So I, I'm kind of wondering where we're going to go with this. But we definitely need to have building to go out and Health Department do, do investigations and inspections so that we can bring something then perhaps to the floor, then maybe to discuss it. But I'm not sure if this would, if this really should go to zoning at this point. I think it might be premature, Mr. President. All right? Thank you.
Counsel Brooks.
I guess my question is, and we wouldn't be the issuer of a special permit to a physical address in South Hadley, Massachusetts. So while some of their property may encroach on Chickaby.
Right.
Their physical address is 749 New Ludlow Road, South Hadley, Mass. So I don't know any purview this committee has over that unless we called them in for the aggrieved property, but the, we never issued a special permit to a business in South Hadley. I'm 110% sure of that.
Right.
And two, I don't know how we call in a business that is operating in South Hadley that may be or may not be aggrieving a resident of Chickaby.
Right.
You know, is there a building permit that's been pulled for the Chickaby location? I don't think so. What the, the maker of the motion is suggesting that when they are operating, the dust is adversely affecting a Chickaby resident versus, you know, work being done in excess of 70 decibels at, you know, address certain in Chickaby. So I, I just don't know what purview we have over them if they're not effectively operating in Chickaby.
Right.
Thank you. Counsel Costello, you, just a recommendation, if you would withdraw and maybe send a letter, have us send a, this here to the Building, Health, and Law Department to review if there's any action we can take. Then we can get together. At that point, send it to a committee. So...
Yeah. Thank you. Counselor Brooks is making an extra, an excellent point. This land area, the address of the business is in South Hadley. Where the actual excavation is being performed is in Chickaby, next to Chickaby Houses.
Okay.
So there's activity in Chickaby. I spoke earlier this evening with Lisa Sanders, and she's very well aware of this property and is well aware that in the past, the city of Chickaby has taken court action against what is, what this business is, and she was questioning whether or not those court orders remain in effect. So South Hadley has the address. The land that's being excavated is in Chickaby, and there is a history. And so what I can do, and I appreciate the, the guidance to make sure this is done right because this is serious for these people that live there. And what I'll do is I'll withdraw the motion, and then I will ask the Building Department, which they've been involved for a long, long time, I'm, Counselor Laflamme is well aware of it, the Board of Health, and the Law Department to get involved in this so that we can update where the city of Chickaby is and the fact that they've got a past here. Thank you. So I'm going to make a motion to withdraw.
And do we have to have a roll call?
To withdraw, yes.
Yeah. All in favor to, oh, no, no, we got to make a motion.
Any other talking?
Any other, but any other comments on the withdraw? Okay. All in favor for the withdraw?
Aye.
Leave to, we got to call the roll on the withdraws.
Oh, we have to call the roll. I'm sorry, on a withdraw.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Belkier.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
The motion passes, 23.
Or that the Parks and Recreation Committee meet to discuss the current state of the parks, current programming, current projects and grants, and upcoming grant projects.
Counsel Kuchain.
Motion that the order be received, take its first reading, and be referred to the Parks Commission for a public hearing.
Motion made to second the order be received and sent to the Parks and Recreation Committee for a public hearing. On the motion, please.
It's our semi-annual update from the Parks Department.
Thank you. Counsel Costello.
Yes, I just want to thank the Parks Department because when we went out for the cleaning on Saturday, Preston Park looked terrific. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion passes.
We have an ordinance to add to the following in schedule, One Way Street, Riverview Place.
Counsel Kuchain.
Motion that the order be received, take its first reading, and be sent to the Ordinance Committee for a public hearing.
Motion that the order be received, take its first reading, and refer to the Ordinance Committee for a public hearing. On the motion.
This ties into the third order in this order.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
We have an ordinance to add to the following in schedule, One Way Street, Lucretia Avenue.
Counsel Kuchain.
Same course.
Motion that the order be received, take its first reading, and refer to the Ordinance Committee for a public hearing. On the motion. On the motion, thank you.
Same course.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I know if I can.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes.
We have an ordinance to add to the following in schedule, One Way Street, Turtle Lot Avenue.
Counsel Kuchain.
Motion that the order be received, take its first reading, and be sent to the Ordinance Committee for a public hearing.
Motion that the order be received, take its first reading, and refer to the Ordinance Committee for a public hearing. On the motion.
This is to correct the wrong direction from the last order I put for the street. I would request that the residents of these streets be notified of the Ordinance Committee meeting so they can have some say in the matter if they have anything to say. I think it's kind of, the reason for adding the other streets is...
We don't send them out for...
That obviously it ties everything into one direction for the U-shaped section of the city. On Lucretia, with people parking on both sides, it's a one-way street effectively. So this will enhance fire, police, and EMS response by putting it in a one-way direction. So I think the police and fire will be agreed to this, and hopefully the residents will. It probably adds 25 seconds to their commute to go to the next street and come around, but I think it will make everything flow in that area. Many, many years ago, the beat officer asked me to do this, so part of this is to help Rogers out, to help traffic flow into their business without causing as much of a safety hazard as there is because people do ignore the signs. So I think this will be a win for everybody.
Counsel Labrie.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, but my one question is, do the residents, are they going to be made aware of the meeting somehow?
Ask for the letter be sent out. I was told we don't send letters out. I don't know why.
We don't.
I'll take that with the Attorney General, but I think it's silly that we're going to, you know, affect all these. It's a small street, there's not a lot of residents.
Right.
They should be aware that there could be a major change to their life, you know, their daily lives with the changing of the street, but...
I went by there today, and I thought the same thing, you know, I knew this was coming up, and I'm saying both, they park both ways now, and then now they've got to rearrange which way they go into their...
It's not a major changes because it's a small street, it's a small, but they should still be aware of it, I think, in my opinion.
Well, I'm going, I'm going to talk on this for a minute. Well, when I did a couple of streets, and I know Mary Beth did too, it's, I went see the neighbors and walked it. We do not send anything other than the 300-foot markings for things. You know, I didn't like the Attorney General.
You can do 300 feet, that'll compass everybody.
What's that?
You can do the 300-foot rule.
No, we don't, we only do it for zoning. So it's always been that way, something we can look at, but we've, we've never allowed it. I know I walked my neighborhood and got people, and I know Counsel Schumsky did once for Litwin School, for those streets, we walked that area. So, you know, like you just mentioned, it's a small street, maybe you can just go and put your card and let them know. That's where, you got your city cards that we give you, you can put it on there and promote it for now. Okay? Thank you. Counsel Crampits.
I was just going to repeat what you had mentioned about that we can't send out letters unless it's like a zone change or something like that, that's required to notify the butters. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes.
We have an application for a new auto detail license applied for by Ortiz Detailing, location 30 Mount Carmel Avenue.
Counsel Brooks.
Make a motion that the new application for an auto detail license be received and referred to the License Subcommittee for a public hearing.
Motion made to second the application for a new auto detail license be received, sent to the License Committee for a public hearing. On the motion, please.
We'll take it up, Benny.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
2025 Hawker and Peddler's license renewal, Jeff Stingdon Cart, Jeffrey Klein.
Counsel Brooks.
Make a motion that the 2025 Hawker and Peddler's license renewal be received and approved this evening with any current restrictions.
Motion made to second the 2025 Hawker and Peddler license be renewed, be received and approved this evening with the restrictions. On the motion.
Self-explanatory.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes.
2025 Bowling Alley license renewal, AMF Lanes, 291 Burnett Road.
Counsel Brooks.
Make a motion that the 2025 Bowling Alley license renewal be received and approved this evening with current restrictions.
Motion made to 2025 Bowling Alley license renewal be received and approved this evening with the restrictions. On the motion.
Self-explanatory.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes.
30 through 33 are 2025 Junk Dealer License Renewals, Willa Mansit Waste Company, Rubidia's Sew and Consignment Shop, Pole Gold Jewelers, Rodriguez Wood Projects, and more.
Conser Brooks.
Make a motion that the 2025 Junk Dealer License Renewals be received and approved with current restrictions.
Motion made in second, 2025 Junk Dealer License Renewals be received and approved this evening with current restrictions. On the motion.
On the motion, unless there's any concerns.
Any other comments from the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
34 through 36 are 2025 Home Occupation License Renewals, Loyalty Tax Service LLC, Francesca Santana, and Elks Baked Goods.
Conser Brooks.
Make a motion that the 2025 Home Occupation License Renewals be received and approved this evening with any current restrictions.
Motion made in second, 2025 Home Occupancy License Renewals be received and approved this evening with current restrictions. On the motion.
Self-explanatory.
Thank you. Any comments from the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion passes. Okay, announcements. Conser Brooks.
Just want to take a moment to remember Harvey LaFleur. I got to know Harvey through his extended family, his daughter and her husband, his grandchildren who I went to high school with. He was an extraordinary man, friend to many, and just a real pillar of this community. You know, to see him going strong at 101 was, you know, not something that I didn't expect. I think everybody thought that Mr. LaFleur would be around for many, many years, and he certainly left an indelible mark on the city of Chicagabe and will forever be remembered. Thank you.
Conser Goff.
Happy Public Service Week, and thank everyone, the nurses, the police, the fire departments, teachers, for all their hard work and dedication, and we appreciate all that they do.
Thank you. Conser Kuchain.
Yeah, I do wish my condolences to the Harvey's family. I was shocked when I seen the obit come out because honestly, I thought he would outlive all of us. He just, he was an amazing man for, you know, at his age still out there getting it done and, you know, being active in the community. It was pretty amazing to see, and I think we all wish we could be like that.
Conser Shumsky.
Thank you. I do want to express my condolences to Harvey's family. He was a great man, and one of my fondest memories I have is actually when we opened a dog park, and here comes Harvey at 100 years old, driving his car, still in his original World War II uniform, and I thought that was incredible. And I actually got to, my first time going into the dog park, we got to walk it together with Treasurer Laflambeau, and it was really cool to hear his stories from his time in the service and just his life experiences, and that'll be something I will always remember to this till the day I die. And I also want to thank the people who assisted me during Ward Six's and the citywide clean sweep on Saturday, Haley Procon from Aura Despa, Richard and Irina Gadecki, and their two grandchildren, and Basil Zegaris. Thank you again, I appreciate it, and I would like, that's it, thank you.
Conser Valkir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I also wanted to reference Harvey's family for my condolences. I thought that was interesting in that he served in World War II, and he could still fit into his uniform for World War II. I was amazed when I heard that, and I shook his hand at one point. I also want to wish all the mothers a Happy Mother's Day this Sunday that's coming up. And again, spring is here, please be careful with the driving. Kids are out on bikes, people are walking, be cognizant of that. And again, in honor of my colleague who had passed, if you see something, say something. Thank you.
Conser Labrie.
Yes, I also want to give my condolences to the family. I met him, I just did a math, when he was 57 years old, he did some formula about my house, finding some rocks and stuff. So I just want my condolences to a lot of the family. Thank you.
Conser Roy.
My condolences. Harvey was coming. I have one little good story. When we moved to the city, Harvey was there practically every week. At a certain time, Harvey would pack his tools away and leave. And he said to Paul LaFleur, the general contract at the time, every single day, he would pack his tools away to go home and have lunch with his wife. This is your safekeeping, thank you.
Conser Crampits.
My condolences to Harvey LaFleur's family. He was a fixture at many patriotic and veterans events, so you'd always see him there. And also, thank you to all of our folks involved in public service and public safety. They put a lot of effort in. My girlfriend is a schoolteacher who teaches autistic children on the higher end of the spectrum, and I can tell you the amount of effort that goes in after class and after work in being a teacher. So I'm in awe of that. So, and then I wanted to wish my mother a Happy Mother's Day, and Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. And I also just wanted to take a moment, kind of a bittersweet moment, to my constituents in Ward Five, I have decided not to seek reelection. It was kind of bittersweet. I've enjoyed serving as a city counselor for almost 23 years. I have other political aspirations, but, you know, I will, you know, I will miss being a counselor, but I think sometimes we know when it's time, and it's time, you know, not to run for reelection, but I wanted to just let folks know in Ward Five that I will not be seeking reelection, and to thank everybody, you know, through the years for their support and kind words. So, thank you.
Conser Costello.
My condolences to the Harvey LaFleur family. He will be missed deeply. And I also want to thank the Chicagabe Cultural Council, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, for their hard work on Saturday, May 3rd, when they went out and they cleaned parks and streets in our city. And a special thank you to Deb Sutherland, who's a neighbor of mine, doesn't live that far from me, and all her hard work. She's been working with the council for a long time, and she did a tremendous job on Saturday. She's also been an active person in our schools, putting on plays for many years. So again, Deb Sutherland, thank you for all that you do.
Conser Ariaga.
My condolences, it's never easy to lose a family member. I also want to say thank you to...
Is your mic on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I also want to say thank you to the Chicagabe Clean Sweep, the Chicagabe Chamber. Ward One was fantastic, it was a wonderful turnout. I think everybody that came, I think as we were cleaning, kids were getting dropped off so they could help out as they saw us. People were stopping and thanking us, so it definitely was an absolute beautiful day. I love seeing the city come out and take pride in their city, which I wish we did more often, but I really do appreciate everybody that showed up for all the wards. It was a fantastic and wonderful day. Happy Mother's Day, and be careful, kids are out, weather's nice, so keep an eye out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made in second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion...